...stands, one nation, under God.
God.
That's both liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder that we have a lot of adjournments today and also that anybody looking at Eight Tucker Drive item is off the agenda. Let's start out with a roll call. See who on the board is here, Peter?
Here.
Ben? I thought I saw Ben.
Hold on, here.
Oh, there he is. There he is. Nicole?
Here.
Rocco?
Here.
Bob? Bob, you're muted.
I'm here.
Okay. Heard you earlier, and Ahmed? Hasn't, not yet. At the moment, we have a quorum at least. We have six people. I think he was planning to join. All right, get this out of the way. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed, and we have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. All right, first item up on the agenda is Eastdale Village, 12th Site Plan Amendment.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, members. How are you?
Jeff, how are you?
I'm well, thanks.
So like, construction's going well out there with the businesses, Ross Eastdale, et cetera?
Yes, yes, we're proceeding right along. Maybe I could share my screen, I can take us, give you a little update, then take us through what we're looking at?
Sure, go ahead, Jeff. Go ahead, thanks.
Thanks. And yeah, so, right, we're early, we're at the 12th Site Plan Amendment, and it seems like a lot, but there's a, you know, there's a lot going on on this project. So we, again, we appreciate that you're allowing us to come here multiple times as we make these changes. But it really is something like forty odd different buildings here, so there's a lot that goes on, there's a lot to the construction details as we move forward, and that's kind of necessitated our need to come here. So what we've got is really consolidation of a number of items in front of you. We haven't been here in probably three months, I think, but we took a long look at the site, at how we build, constructibility, how to be more efficient, both with your time and with our contractors, continuing to look at safety and the flow of materials in the site. We've got some lessons learned, and particularly shows up, I think, in our changes to the refuse areas and some of the equipment we're using. And just overall, how to do this on the east side now, how to do this a little better and a little more efficiently. So we're, again, rolled a number of things into this project. If I can get this to advance here. Here we go. This is just the development program, and for this 12th amendment, there's no change in the number of bedrooms or apartments, no change in commercial square footage. Two of the larger residential buildings, the four-story residential buildings, got a very small amount larger, Building 16 grew by 279 square feet, Building 17 grew by 19 square feet. Again, not a big change there, but certainly is a little change, and we continue to track that in the development program that's part of the plan set, SNCO. So, yes, construction, this is the west side, and again, to reorient the board on where we are. Forty-four is at the bottom of the page here. Eastdale Avenue North is at the signalized intersection. So on the, on this side here, the A Buildings and Ross East is right at the corner of Eastdale Avenue and Forty-four, and then Buildings A, two, three, four, five, and six, continuing along with the side of Eastdale Avenue. Building B is the next one. Our offices are scheduled to be in there, we're moving sometime this summer, be on the second floor of this building above a number of tenants down below. The medical office building, Building C is at the, kind of, the terminus of Eastdale Avenue. Then coming back up, the commercial cottages, the four commercial cottages, which have been there now for a few months and doing well, and the green. And then the work we haven't started is Building E, as we're still finalizing our tenants on Building E on that side. The residential area is really all built out on this side. Buildings one, two, three, and four, five, and six, so the townhouses, and then the three-story buildings, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, these are all occupied. The mail leasing building, I'm sorry, was that a question? Right, mail leasing building's occupied, and then the community center, we're actually in the process of looking for a TCO in that building right now. And then the pool is scheduled to open sometime this summer, it's really a hole in the ground right now. So on this side, the only part that's left to finish out are the Ortega building and the, these two other pads here, programmed for the bank and for the daycare are still yet, as yet unfinished, we haven't really completed tenant-specific designs for those pads. So the changes that we're looking at on this side, we've highlighted these, you can see some clouded areas on this plan, and I'll just kind of focus in on those. This is in the area of the central green, you can see the community center on the one side, and the mail building is on the other. Not a big change, but again, wanted to bring it to your attention, we've eliminated the fence around the playground feedback we got, we didn't want the kids to feel penned in, so that fence is gone. We also eliminated some, what was called wave-finding addressing signage for the buildings two and three. We replaced that with different building-mounted signage, and both Arlington Fire and E-911 have agreed those are consistent with what they need for safety and addressing purposes. The other changes, and you can see, again, on one side I have the old configuration and new configuration, really three areas of change behind Buildings A and the corner of Building B. One is the refuse area was reconfigured, it got a little bigger, a little reorganized with some curbing. We added some mountable curb to improve snow storage areas, we can push snow easier instead of the standard curb, so you can see that change. We changed this island here, it was one fat island, one skinny island, we've got two kind of normal-sized islands now, I think it looks a little more suitable. And then again, back here, we've got mountable curb in this corner of the site. So again, not significant changes, but changes nevertheless that we wanted to share with the board and staff for regale.
All right.
Now we'll get to the east side, where we really have been doing a lot of site work on this side, and just started to, just started to, some of the site construction. And again, to orient you on the buildings, we pick up on the numbering for the residential buildings, we ended with the building number 11 over there. So the townhouses are 12, 13, 14, 15, and the large buildings, 16, 17, and 18. And then the Ortega House is up here at the top. And then the commercial core on Eastdale Avenue South, again, at the signal, Buildings H, I, J, K, and L. So, and these will, some of these buildings will likely be subdivided, and again, as we finalize the tenant mix on this side, so these, we're trying to keep these naming conventions in place, so we can all keep it straight what we're looking at. And so we have some, again, some highlighted areas, some clouded areas that I'm going to zoom in and talk about. These are mainly the refuse areas and some of the changes that we've incorporated. This one is behind Building 17, really got, it's a double area, it serves partially the commercial area and partially residential area. It's got a little bigger, added an island here to improve stormwater flows, a little different configuration of how that works. This refuse area is the one between 16 and 17, again, a little bigger, a little slightly organized slightly differently. I forgot to mention, we lost, did lose one parking space up here at the top area. Managed to keep the parking the same on this middle refuse area. And then this refuse area between Buildings 15 and 16, again, got a little bigger, lost one parking space, but it works better with the equipment. And all of these configurations continue to work with the turning movements for the garbage trucks, and in some cases, it's improved access to make sure that we can get those vehicles in and out of here safely.
All right.
Couple of changes that weren't clouded, but we made changes in the, in one of the parking lots behind Buildings H, I, and J. You can see these two curbs here are fat, and this is kind of the original, they were skinny curbs, needed to add transformers, so we've located them in these two fatter curbs and lost a parking space in each of these areas, as we added that larger island. And then the biggest change was really the reconfiguration of the landbank parking area behind Building 18. I will say one other change in Building 18, for whatever reason, we originally designed the handicap parking, it wasn't centered on the building access, and as we looked at it, realized it probably needed to shift down, so we relocated that, so now it lines up better with the front door. But in that configuration, we also lost a, lost one parking spot. So we picked, so there's a total of five parking spaces lost, we picked those back up by reconfiguring the landbank parking area, moved the playground down here closer to the mail building, and again, eliminated the proposed fence around this playground as well. So this area was just reconfigured to, we think, work a little better. Number of utility changes, not, nothing really earth-shattering here. We added water services, the number of water services from the commercial core, again, recognizing a lot of these buildings may get subdivided, they'll need to have an individual water service. The water main runs down the middle of Eastdale Avenue, and we're going to need to pave that, so we have water services now stubbed out onto, or plan to stub services out onto either side, really four or five different locations for each of these buildings, to make sure that we have appropriate flexibility based on what could be subdivided out for these buildings in the future. Modified old force main, and the, that comes up from the maintenance building per health department requirements. And then we added water and sewer services to the mail building. This mail building was originally envisioned to be, you know, no services, just a place to house some mailboxes. Some of you may have heard me talk about mail delivery in this center, and it really, online shopping has really changed the nature of mail handling and multifamily projects, and it's kind of stunning. Amazon delivers 2.4 million packages a day in New York City, 90,000 of which are stolen, by the way. So this is, again, kind of just the volume of mail that comes through here is astounding, so we're getting adding water and sewer to this building, it'll have environmental services, it'll be enclosed, we're continuing to program out how to better handle mail, both on this side and the other side.
All right.
And then we have, all right, we've been talking about, I'm sorry for the reorientation here, but I wanted to make it fit on the screen better, we've been talking about the border between the townhouses and the neighbors along Darrell Place, and originally there were trees proposed along this border, and have been requested, particularly from Mr. Martin, but I believe he's also spoken with his neighbors, and so for, in response to that, we have proposed a six-foot fence along this entire run of the site. I also wanted to show you, and I've highlighted all the drainage that's in the ground here that's between the townhouses and the fence, this is a 36-inch, actually, town stormwater line, we have a 24-inch line in the ground here, another 12-inch here, and then there's all this grating that swills, brings the water, stormwater down from the site down through here. So there's just, there's, you know, there's some spots where maybe we could add some additional landscaping, but really, this is so tight in here, we've got room for either landscaping or fencing. We had proposed landscaping originally, and our understanding of what the neighbors have requested is the fencing instead, and so that's how we've resolved, we think, the concerns with the neighbors for privacy is with this fencing. We'll also note that, because this is a swale, the ground really drops away here, in between here, and comes back up, so this is, the fence is really at the high point, any other plantings inside of that would end up being lower in elevation at their planting, so.
I guess, my only comment on that is the fence is six feet high, so I don't know if you originally had some higher trees there that helped shield, but whatever you could fit in later perhaps would help the neighbors there as well.
And I think that's, I think that's right, if there's the possibility to put some trees in later, we're not opposed to that, it's not something that we can really kind of guarantee at this point, or put on a plan, but it's something that, you know, we may be able to supplement something in the future.
All right, continue.
So now I want to get to the last piece of this, and how we plan on building out at least the residential portion of this project and our phases. So this is, this is the phasing plan, it's part of the plan set, and it really does focus on the residential area. The commercial cores, these two, you know, white squares here, those will, those will get designed and built out on a schedule that really becomes very tenant-driven, and so you'll see changes in those phases as we move forward, with the intent of, really, this side being built out first, and then we'll build this side out last. So the idea is to build this safely, build it in a way that keeps the public out of the construction. And so let me just kind of run through the sequence of build-out here. What you have is, the red buildings, that's, those are the ones that'll be built in the current phases, as I flip through it, yellow are the roads and parking areas, and then I've just got the various utilities also highlighted in the ground here. So that's Building 18, and 17, 16, 15, 14, 13, and then 12 and the Ortega House. The Ortega House will get moved early in the process, because we need to have that in place, but won't be, won't become live until the end, just because of roadway access necessary to make that work. So, one of the things this really necessitates for us is, and going back here, is building these three big buildings, are there, that's phase, what we call 3A in our plans, DCO, those buildings need to be built together, because of their proximity, because of their size, because of their complexity, and this is really what we've learned in building, we've built Buildings A and, I'm sorry, Buildings Two and Three on the other side together. There's a lot of material and people and lifts in the road around these buildings that we really want to, as much as possible, keep people out. So these buildings kind of open up, one right after the other, but we, you know, build 18 first, and then people are going to mostly, we believe, access through Eastdale Avenue in the signalized intersection, then build 17, and we'll again have the access mostly out the front, and then build Building 16, and people will end up using both of these access points more so, but we need to keep the public kind of out of this zone as much as possible for safety while we're building it. So that, so then we go to Build Building 15, and one of the issues this raises is between Buildings 15 and 14 is the connector to Darrell Place. And this was, this connector to Darrell Place isn't something that was required by Seeker, it's something that was asked for, it's kind of a relief valve, so the neighbors would have the opportunity to get to a signalized intersection instead of coming down Darrell Place and making a left. And one more sheet here, this is kind of a blow-up of that connector road, Building 15, Building 14. It's very close to Building 15, it's more than just building a connector road, we also have to, again, first thing we have to do is we have to build a sewer connection to connect Mr. Phillips's house to the sewer system here, because this construction will take place on top of his septic area, his septic has to be abandoned. We committed to building a gravel pad here for him to park his RV, and then we'd build the other road, the guide rail, the gate, the signage, and have that open. So this ends up being, you know, this is very close to Building 15, which is part of the constructibility issue of it, but equally important, if this is open, you can see, it would force people right into the middle of our construction area, if people are coming down the connector, it'll force them right into the middle of here, and we really want to keep the public out of this area as much as possible until we get Building 15 built, and then there's free pass into here, and we can continue to build the rest of the way out without having an impact on, giving people a safe way out while we continue to build out, going up, this is probably Parkside Drive here. So this is, this is a change in when we would build the Darrell Place connector, but it really is based on how we really need to build this out, it's an unavoidable change.
Do you have a timeline as to which you would build that connector road?
So, yes, these buildings take about a year to finish, we're under construction with 18 now, broken ground on 17 as well, so they'll be done about a year from now, and then, so Building 15 would be the summer of '22 with a start, and probably can't get this paved until spring of '23.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anything else, Jeff?
That's it.
All right. I had a quick question, as long as I'm seeing the connector road going into Victory Lane there, when is that road going to be formalized? Is that part of when those three buildings are done, or?
I'm sorry, say again?
The connector road into Victory Lane?
Oh, this is, that's his here, this is part of the initial phase.
That's part of the initial phase, because...
Yes. I'm sorry, let me go back to, right, this is the, when we, we'll be looking for certificate occupancy on the first building, 18, this is what we envision will be built in terms of the roadways, what's in yellow.
Okay, thanks. Because I was wondering how far, Victory Lane is in rough shape there, no shoulders, and there's another project also on tonight's agenda that's going to make use of the commercial space, so it might be some coordination there to make sure that intersection comes out okay. All right.
Jeff, this is Rocco. A quick thing here, did you say that building, that first building you're building, do you expect that to be occupied prior to the other two buildings?
This building here, yes, this is Building 18, we expect that to become online, probably, these will probably stagger a couple of months after each other. Sorry, say again?
No, continue on, then I've got a question.
Okay. As I say, the, most of that work at that point will be interior finishing, so what happens is that really, all of the, most of the lifts are now out of the way, and it's much, it's much more straightforward interior construction, it's the exterior construction here that gets crazy.
And when do you expect the exterior construction to complete? Because, so I'm kind of, I've got a question regarding your comment wanting to keep the public out of there until those buildings are completely finished, but if you've got occupancy already in one of them, I'm not sure how that comment drives.
Right, so the, understood, so the, right, we, again, need to get the heavy work out, and then we weren't starting this building until these buildings are done, and so the idea is this building gets built, it's the one right next to the connector, that's done, we have then this last piece of roadway, which is also gets constrained by Building 15, that gets opened up, we can bring people in here, we've got the big equipment out of the road here, really all, it really all rolls into kind of the same answer, no matter which way, we kept looking at it, is that we really don't want to drive people from this intersection through here, or even really around here, because we have to build 14 and 15, we need to keep them out of this zone as much as possible.
All right. Okay, so that means that the people coming out of Darrell have to wait quite a bit longer. When was the original phasing for that connector?
Right, so there was no date associated with it, it was, the trigger was really the second building on this side, so by moving it from, which, again, at that point in time, it was, in our minds, unclear exactly how we were going to build it out, but if, based on how we're going to build it now, this ends up being about a year after when the second building would come online, somewhere in the nine-month to 12-month range, again, it just kind of depends on the timing for when they're complete and when we can pave that piece of it.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Let's get to Eric for Department of Recommendation. Eric, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, there you go.
Most of the changes were not major, so there's a recommendation for the board to make a secret finding and for a conditional approval if you're an ingredient. I guess our main comment had to do with the connector that you were just discussing, because, just right, it was originally proposed for any building with residential occupancy for the connector to be activated following the second of those on the east side. As proposed, it would occur after, the original proposal for Eastdale Village included 380 units by right, as of right for the MHC district, and all of those units, according to the current proposal, it would be... it would be after that three hundred and eighty units were developed and only the ones over the, over commercial and possibly the townhomes. Some of the townhomes might remain. So we thought, it was originally to, as Jeff mentioned, a relief valve for the Darrow residence. There was quite a bit of discussion about that. So we just thought the board should entertain some discussion about it and see if there was perhaps some alternate mechanism, either construction sequencing or rerouting of the road of the connector temporarily to Karen Way. Because the original note, special note for that connector did provide for alternate routing. It anticipated that there might be some construction issues in the timing for it. So it, it, the note provided for, you know, a gravel road, a temporary connection, whatever way was. So the board may want to discuss that with the applicant and see whether or not there might be an alternative routing or, or sequencing to accommodate it. So that was one comment. The other comment was for the landscaping along the, the rear of the Darrow Place residence. You know, if it's, if it doesn't make sense, I think the original problem was with some of the utilities there. The MHC district did, did seek long-term buffering. Vegetation tends to work a little better for that. So again, the board might want to see if it, if some of that landscaping could be added on later, perhaps where feasible, given the constraints of utilities there. Those are our two comments for the board's discussion. And I think that was pretty much it. Don, did you have anything you wanted to add?
We had, you know, we had a similar comment about the driveway access. It sounds like the applicant has made a decision on how they are building this. I'm wondering what would happen if they made a different decision on how they were building this. Whether, you know, those buildings could be built earlier and therefore the road could go through. Our second comment, I mean, we have a bunch of smaller ones, but we just are looking for a swift amendment like always. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Don. All right, this is for public hearing. So I move, we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. I see Ahmed is on now as well. So if anyone would like to speak, you can raise your hand on Zoom or just unmute yourself. Or if you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself. Looking through, not seeing anyone currently. I don't see anyone. All right. Well, you'll be back for more amendments. So I move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right, let's go around the board for comments. Let's start with Peter.
Question for the town attorney. The, the fence that's proposed along Darrow Place is six feet high. Is that, are we restricted by the town code as far as the, the fence height?
I'd have to look at what the MHT requirements are, but I believe that the town code has a maximum of six feet for height, in height. They could certainly apply for a variance if they wanted a taller one, but I don't think that it's possible without variance.
I was thinking that for some reason that if it was on the front yard, it was restricted, but not in a side yard. I mean, I, I think.
In a front yard, it's restricted to three and a half feet.
Okay. It's so we can look at a variance. I'm just thinking, you know, we're eliminating trees. We're going with a six foot set, a six foot fence. I'm just concerned that the neighbors are going to have a serious case of buyer's remorse. Because a six foot fence, when you place it against the height of those buildings, it's really not going to provide a, a lot of screening. So I'm just, I'm, I think it's something we should look at or the applicant should look at. Because I don't think a six foot fence is really, I don't think they're going to be happy with it. I think they're gonna, I think they're happy with something, but I think they might not be happy with, with that fence height. My other comment is about the access road. With regard to Rocco's comment earlier about Mr. Kane's comment about wanting to keep the public out of the area. I don't think there are more than seven or eight houses on Darrow Place. I don't, I don't see how there's going to be a huge influx of traffic, number one. And number two, it seems to me that, you know, that was a promise that was made to those homeowners when we started this whole project, that there was going to be a connector road and there would be some alleviation of the traffic tie-up that would be incurred as a, as a consequence. So I would like to see Mr. Kane, who's very creative and honestly doing a terrific job, to come up with some kind of plan so we don't delay this connector road for another two years. I also have a question for Mr. Kane. Mr. Kane, you there?
Yes, I'm here. Yes.
When we had that big snowstorm recently, did you have to truck any snow off-site?
We did. We trucked it across the street.
Okay.
Right. Yes, we did. That's a.
And what do you think? Do you think it would be possible for you to put your heads together with some, with some obviously very talented and creative people to see if there could be some way to provide some access, some relief for the people on Darrow Place?
I, I, I will tell you, Mr. Philly, we have struggled with this for months and months. And if I had a better solution, I, I would, I, I would absolutely have come to this board and said, hey, this isn't great, but it's, but it's, you know, it's, it's, this is what we, how we, how we want to do it. We, we, we can't, the proximity of that, of that, of that connector road to building fifteen means fifteen really needs to be built first because of all the sequencing. And to build fifteen, we're going to be in the road in front of fifteen. So the road in front of fifteen, it, 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 it has to be, has to be complete before we can build, to build or fourteen, if you're going to send them out the other way. It's, it's, it's the, it's the way, you know, and, and to, to, to Don's comments is that, you know, we made a decision about how we wanted to build. Yes, but we really made a decision based on safety in terms of how to build that connector road in a way that allows us to build fourteen, fifteen and, you know, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen in a way that's safe and to get the people, get the public through there safe. This is, this is not ideal. It's not a two-year, it's not a two-year change on when the, when the, when it was going to be built. It is, it most of it, I think, a year difference in when it's going to be built. It's not insignificant. I, I can't find a way around it as much as I, as much as I wanted to. I really, we have, we have looked at this, not just me, but the entire team has looked at this to try to find a better way to, 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 to build this out. And I really can't find a way that's, that's, that's constructable and safe.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I heard you say a few minutes ago that the connector road could not be constructed until after the completion of building number sixteen, which would be in spring of two thousand twenty-three, which is two years from now.
Right. So the sixteen is, will be open in twenty, we're in twenty-one now, it'll be open in twenty-two. And then we move from sixteen to fifteen. So fifteen gets built in, fourteen, fifteen get built in, in twenty-two and probably won't be paved until twenty-three. So that's, that's two years from now. But it's not two years from the trigger of the second building coming online. Because the second building coming online would be a year from now anyway. If, am I making sense?
So are you saying that the trigger for the connector road would be in twenty-twenty-two, the spring of twenty-twenty-two?
If, if there were no changes to the, to the, to the plan, yes, it would be spring of twenty-twenty-two. We're saying spring of twenty-twenty-three.
I, my concern really is that, you know, that those people, the homeowners next door, I mean, that, uh, my sense is that, you know, we, a commitment was made to them with regard to the connector road. And I could be totally wrong. I mean, we've been through this, these discussions so many times. I honestly don't recall if there was a commitment, a timeline connected to the connector road or not. But if there, if there were a timeline, you know, I like to do a little history. Is that possible, Eric? Do you have any idea?
On the history of which, Jeff, Peter?
The target date for the connector road.
The target date, it's actually in your packets. It's identified in the paragraph that was clipped and put in. So it was going to be after the one hundred ninety-fifth residential unit, which is going to be met by the residential on the west side, haven't already been completed for that. And also in this, so the applicable trigger now is issuance of any certificate of occupancy for the second building containing any residential use on the east side of Route forty-four.
But there was no date certain, which I think was the, was the question.
Jeff, just out of curiosity in light of Peter's interest, there's a landbagged parking area next to the playground just across from the connector from Darrow. Wouldn't it be possible to make use of that future landbagged parking area for a temporary roadway to get to Karen Way and keep Darrow traffic entirely out of the construction area?
Yes. I'd love to say yes. I can't, I can't build a connector. I can't build a connector road.
I can't build, and I can't build the sewer line that has to connect to it. I can't build the sewer, the, the sewer connection, can't build the, the pad there until I have fifteen and the machinery that runs around the fifteen out of the way there. That's, fifteen is really standing in the way of, of how we build it. And fifteen, from a sequencing standpoint, can't really get built on its own in an, in an island. It doesn't, it, 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 it needs to be connected through to the rest of the traffic flow. So that's, um, again, we, it was, it's a, it's a sequencing that really things have, the items have to follow one another, right?
Rather than belabor the point, I'm sure that you'll be back to see us again. We just ask you to please revisit. And between now and the next time we speak with you, if you could possibly come up with some idea, if, if you can't. But if you can, you know, I think would be to everyone's, to the benefit of all concerned. If it's, it's all possible.
Just a quick question.
Mr. Philly, I looked at the code in two ten sixty-nine. It has eight feet in height. I took a quick, and Eric's nodding. He didn't want to correct me. But I took a quick look through the MHT and I don't see anything that requires a shorter height in that, that limits it. So it may be that we can do an eight foot without a variance?
It seems to me that it was eight feet in the side yard.
If anything other than a front yard is three, which is three and a half. So the way it actually reads, where corner clearances are required, you need less. And within required front yards, no hedge fence or wall shall exceed three and a half feet.
Great. Thank you. I thought we were limited to six. If we can go to eight, we'll, God bless you.
I remember doing some eight foot fences on some projects. I couldn't remember if there's a variance or not. But if eight feet's by right, then that, that'd be a good thing to do probably.
One more question on the connector. This is Mike. Is there any reason why fifteen couldn't be built like at the same time as sixteen? I mean, it's the same townhouse as, as the townhouse is pretty much on the other side of the street. So what's, what's the reason why it couldn't be built simultaneously?
I, I'm just trying to, to think through the, the sequencing there. So the eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, the, you know, we just, it, it becomes partially a manpower issue, a staffing issue to get, to get people over twelve of sixteen onto, onto fifteen. We move crews between, from building to building to building to building to keep, to keep people steadily working, steadily employed through there. So fifteen will follow right after sixteen. I, I, I don't know how we, we could, right, I, I can look at building them together. But that's, that's, that's really becomes the crunch for us is go to the big building and then having the staff left over, the subs left over to build, to build that as well. We'll take a look.
I have a related question, Jeff. I mean, you said you won't be able to pave it possibly till spring of twenty-twenty-three, but it could be a, a sub base kind of road up until before that? So the neighbors could get access to it?
You know, I, I, and, and we, we looked at, yeah, right, not paving, leaving that as, as a gravel base. The slope on that, on that hill makes it, makes that particular location very hard to maintain. And so trying to get the snow out of there, keeping that, keeping that particular path free and clear of snow is much harder with, with gravel than it is with, with pavement. So we, again, this was one of the things that we looked at and just, we're much more comfortable with it as a, as a paved surface, being able to, to maintain it.
All right, just a thought.
For, for safety. Yeah, no, I, and I, and it's a, and it's exactly one of the, one of the conversations we had in-house.
He had a paving place that's closed for, for winter as part of the issue.
Right. They close usually the week of Thanksgiving and they open up again in April. So we should, you know.
All right. Let me, anything else, Peter, you had?
No, thank you.
All right, Ben? Comments?
Yeah, I'm listening to all this and thinking to what, what's going on. I gotta say, not that I'm, I don't care about the people on Darrow Place, but you open up fifteen and maybe fourteen, you're going to have a lot more people besides just the people on Darrow Place going through the construction area, which is not a good thing, I don't think. So think about that. You're going to have more people and more traffic. Not a good thing. That's all.
All right. Nicole?
Jeff, do you know if they're proposing any benches around the playgrounds?
We typically do have them. I, I'm just, I'm pausing because I, I can't remember if there are any on the plans there. But typically we have benches at the, at the play areas. If there's not any on the plans, I, I will, we'll get some on there because, yeah, that's, so they should be on there.
Okay. And also, do you propose any type of shading for the parents that will be watching their children play? Such as tree or some small pavilion, something like that?
We didn't have anything specifically outlined for that. One of the things I, I suspect will happen in the future is our mail building's going to get bigger. And I will certainly look at that as we, in, in the design there to see if there's some place to find some, some, some additional shade for the parents.
Yeah, that would be great.
Certainly a tree would be nice. It might help shade some of the playground area too.
Yep, okay.
Let's see. Go to Rocco?
Okay, yeah, I think, you know, mainly the connector road because of my concern of what the residents there were promised in the past, at least relief. Because a year is really a long time. Also, you know, there is being able to increase the height of a fence would certainly be nice, especially with the elimination of the trees. And then everything else that's been said certainly makes a lot of sense. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thanks, Rocco. Bob, you have anything?
Yeah, I just, I agree with a lot of the comments about the residents of Darrow Place. The alternate, Jeff, you talked about an alternate bypass. What was wrong with it? Can't be that it's impossible to make one, but with the characteristics that you said, it wasn't a viable thing to do.
The, the, I think if we're talking about the alternate of, of taking the, taking cars. The, the, I think if we're talking about the alternate of taking the, taking cars through the playground area, is that the, is that what we're talking about with the alternate?
The bypass road that goes out to Victory Lane, right, which is now, I think from what I understood is twenty twenty-three before, before that's in operation, unless I misunderstood.
That'll be earlier, I think, right, Jeff?
I'm sorry, I am, I'm you're talking about the Victory Lane connector, right, is it?
Yeah, that's the bypass road we've been talking about, right?
Or, or we've been talking about the, the Darrow Place connector, not the, although we've talked about both of them, but.
But the Victory Lane one is going to be done sooner, right, as part of
Yes.
with eighteen seventeen.
Right, as part of the initial phase, yes.
Right, and then the Darrow Place one is the one that we've been asking about the timing of, right?
All right, so I, that was my, my mistake. I was thinking that Darrow Place connector was going to Victory Lane, but you, you mentioned you looked at other solutions for that and there was nothing, I'm just talking about Darrow Place now. That was okay, and I'm just curious what was wrong with it.
I should say, we looked for other solutions. We didn't, it was slightly different looking at other solutions. We, we, you know, is that, was there a way to, to connect at a different spot other than that? And, and, and there really wasn't. Was there a way to, I think we, you know, again, build kind of the olive and build fifteen first about impacting everything else. And that, that, that was something that, that, that really didn't, didn't, didn't work. Was there a way to build fifteen? I think the, the critical question was, was there a way to build fifteen with having that road be, that connector road be, be active? And we, we, we don't believe we can safely do that. And that's, that's, that's where, that's where we landed. It was, became, became a really construction safety issue for the, for the entire team.
So have, have the residents of Darrow Place been made aware that we're talking maybe two years out before that bypass is available?
We've not had a specific conversation, but again, because there was never a, there was never a specific date that was ever discussed that it was gonna be done by. And this is a request, unfortunate request to push it later in the project. But it, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't violate any specific date promise made to those, to those residents. And certainly doesn't, doesn't, doesn't violate any, any, any secret contraventions that would have been in place to require it being in at a specific date. This was, this was in as as a, cause a, as a, as a neighbor, as a, as a, as a way of, 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 of trying to involve them in the, in the, in some of the solutions for the, for the project here. And again, it's, it's, I, you know, nobody's happy about the, this request to move the date, but it's, we couldn't find a way around it.
I'm just, you know, the past year, March through where we are today, the traffic took a big nosedive during the first half of the year last year. He was driving around here, I've lived here since the late sixties, and it was never this light. And it's picked up and it's gotten back to what normal was back then. And with the addition of those buildings, I'm, you know, the traffic is gonna be, with the vaccines coming out, people are gonna be back out trying to be as normal as possible. It's gonna make it much more difficult for those people on Darrow to get where they want to go, unless they want to turn right coming in.
You know, one of the things that we didn't talk about at all is the, the, the big change in forty-four in this quarter is the fact that there's now a traffic signal at Eastdale Avenue. And where before traffic had a, you know, a free run from Victory, which wasn't producing a lot of traffic, so almost a free run from, from the signal at Walgreens. Anyway, that whole run, that traffic would, would, would build up and coming down, coming down forty-four. That's now stopped a lot by the, by the signal creating additional gaps in, in, in the traffic. And that, we believe, provides quite a bit more opportunity for traffic out of Darrow Place that you wouldn't have seen absent this project.
All right, I just, I just think that's, you know, it's, it's something that could, you know, kind of irritate the people who live on that street, depending on how it goes. And I, you know, we have, I don't have that kind of situation where I'm going where I've got to wait by the fitway into traffic like these people do. And maybe traffic lights gonna help. I don't know if there's enough information to decide whether it provides the kind of support that they would need to be able to get out where they want to go. That's all. I don't want to beat this thing to death, but.
Yep, we're trying to figure out a solution to get it open earlier, as you can see, Jeff.
Can I just make one more comment, Carl?
Yep.
And as Mr. Kane's concern for safety on a construction site is very important. But I visited the west side from, from the very early stages of construction many times. And I never had a problem. I always thought that the traffic, the roads are very carefully and skillfully managed. Thank you. Again, we, 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 all right, we try. This was one of this, this became an issue that we couldn't, we couldn't find a way around. And that's, you know, I, again, I, again, not to, not to repeat myself too much, but that's, that's what drove this.
Yep, ready to head, Ahmad, do you have any comments to add?
Yeah, I, I'm just a little bit confused about whether this is part of the project or that in the conce, in the sequence of doing things, or like has been mentioned by Jeff, it's a good neighbor thing that was tagged along later on. Because if it's part of the project and we have promised it in the plan, I think we should find an alternative one way or another to ease the pain on the residents. But if it's really not needed, but it's a good neighbor thing to do, and now I can do it, I can understand it. So I'm not sure which one of them, do, do we have it as part of our project plan? Like I heard from Eric, it's after this many of units, we need to have this connector in there. And have we reached that goal? And now we are, we have to build it, or we're still not, not known?
I could answer part of that. It was, it was a condition of the initial approval into, it was not a seeker condition. It was not the result, it was not seeker mitigation or the result of traffic findings, as Jeff mentioned. I did take a look back at the, at the seeker, original seeker findings. And I think there were references in the EIS or some traffic correspondence. It, the effects on, on Darrow Place didn't warrant a left turn lane as a result of traffic analysis, because I think it was because it was a minor roadway. And so the state highway took precedence. So it was not a seeker effect required for mitigation. But in the course of site plan review subsequent to seeker, it became an issue and was eventually incorporated in the original site plan. And then now the original site plan is subject to amendment by the planning board. So it's, the note's been on the plan since, since the twenty eighteen approval, or whenever that plan was signed. And now they're proposing to alter it.
Right, perhaps, Jeff, you'd be willing to say after the second building versus waiting for all three of them to?
I mean, after the third?
After the third, yeah.
Yeah, so, so you can't get, so B right now says issuance of any certificate of occupancy for the second building containing any residential use on the east side. If that were changed to third, that would mean that the third building sixteen, one in the back, could not be occupied until the road was done. And, and so maybe fifteen and sixteen would be built at the same time. That's, that, that would be. But I don't know if that's workable or not.
Well, it sounds like, yeah, Jeff was gonna look into that, but there could be some issues with that.
I, I think that if it's part of the plan, then if there is a will, there is a way. That's my it's not a good neighborly thing. And if people complaining, then should find a way to do it.
Clearly, we're not reneging on the, on, on any issues on the plan. And just for, for clarity, we're asking to move the, to move the trigger. I, you know, I we, yes, it's a commitment. My comment about good neighbor was, was, was meant that it's not, wasn't a requirement based on any particular finding. It was, it was based on something that we thought we could accommodate. And the, the mistake I made was thinking that we could do it after the, the second building there. And you know, sitting here today, we can't. And that's, 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 that's what I'm, what I'm stuck with trying to, trying to, 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 to figure out a way out. Lisa?
Yes, sir.
Is there some way that in tonight's action, we can redirect any action on changing the, the target, the trigger for the Darrow Place, the Place Connector?
When you say redirect, do you mean postpone?
Yes.
I think that the board certainly could grant, I don't think this is a decision, Jeff, it's not going to change your plans imminently, is that correct? So that if the board were to grant everything requested other than that, and then revisit that for the next meeting, would that be something that, you know, would hold things up? Or is that? It would allow any of the other changes to be made as part of the twelfth? We could take a couple of different courses on that to, for cleanliness of the record. What we might do is have you withdraw that particular request and then grant everything else and have you make that request at a later date. Perhaps with something that the board might like better, or some additional reasons justifying why it is the way it is. That would be one procedural way to do it. Or the board could, you know, just not address it. Or, you know, it may be that you want to pull the board members and the board members may be, may not like it, but may be okay with the added year too. I don't know.
That doesn't sound, doesn't sound like they are, in general.
I'm not there.
It's, it's an extra nine months through a year, Jeff has stated.
Right, so.
Depends how, how busy the, the road is getting and what the neighbors are encountering trying to turn left out of there.
Right, again, clearly, we, we would, would, would hope we can, we could, we could get approval this evening for the, for the whole, for the whole package. If the, if the board needs to pull that piece of it out, then we will, we will resubmit. I, I, I would see Monday is the next resubmit date. I'm, I'm not gonna be able to, I don't think, resubmit anything for Monday to be on the, the next meeting. So it would be, right, it would be after that before we could come back with some other continued discussion on the, on the issue. But.
I think, I think it'd be more, it may be more appropriate when you come in for number thirteen to, to include it with that, perhaps, not right away.
Carl, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you.
I was thinking, he'll be back for your probably thirteenth amendment when some of the additional plans firm up, but if not.
I think there are building permits pending soon, if Jeff might want to chime in, on building sixteen and seventeen. By which time the sequence will probably need to be, I, will become, I'm guessing would become less changeable.
It's a tough one. And I hate that. I mean, is there any thing you can go off and think about, Jeff, to come back? I mean, you've said you've looked at it quite a bit.
I mean, the, the I'm the, the, I, I can, I can, you know, again, look at the, I can have the the construction team look at the construction schedule again and see, you know, where the, where those dates fall and, and provide additional information to you on, on how that, on how that lays out. That'll, that may, that may help you understand the, the dilemma we're in a little better. I, I, and I will, I will do that. And then you know, we'll go back and continue to look at, is there an alternative way to, to, to get this built earlier? I will, you know, again, we'll go beat the bushes one more time to see if there's an alternative.
So maybe to Eric's point, should we take, go with what Lisa's suggestion was, which was basically to approve all but that change? So that this, this site plan amendment can be, you know, approved and ultimately conditions met and signed. So it's not holding up anything, at least for now. Would that help? I think that'd be good.
I think unless, you know, board members are in agreement with the, not looking at it further, but it didn't sound that way.
Jeff, I'll suggest if, if you decided to go that way, then Jeff, I think we could accommodate a late submittal for the April meeting to give you a little time to see what you might come up with in the way of information or alternatives in order to expedite some resolution to that issue.
That sounds very sensible. Yep.
All right, well, looks like we'll do the motion with that way. Nicole?
I move that the planning board find that the Eastdale Village twelfth site plan amendment involves incremental changes to the Eastdale Village project of negligible magnitude and scope that are non-significant and consistent with the previous seeker findings as amended September seventeenth, twenty twenty as modified by the proposed incremental changes described in the planning board application amended planning reporting materials received February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Second. Moved and seconded for seeker. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village twelfth site plan amendment excluding Darrow Place Connector Road, subject to the following. One through ten D, also eleven fence along Darrow Place to be eight feet in height and twelve to add benches and some sort of shading area around playgrounds.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right.
Thank you. And we'll, again, put together a further package and see you next month.
Yep, we'll try to take a look at that, whatever you can come up with. Maybe the schedule can work out to get that paved in the fall of twenty-two instead of. Yep, we'll try to take a look at that, whatever you can come up with. Maybe the schedule can work out to get that paved in the fall of twenty-two instead of waiting till spring of twenty-three.
Okay, all right, let me, uh, right, let's, we'll take a hard look at it. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is Friendly Ford. Back for site plan. Amendment. Site plan, uh, and special use permit. Who's on representing Friendly Ford today?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Rich Cordon with JMC. I'm here with you tonight. Representing Friendly Ford. I'm here with Brent Kasek, uh, Steve Barnaby, the, uh, project, uh. Architect, uh, Mark Brennicker, the general manager, and Eric Khan is the property owner and applicant. Thank you guys so much for the comments that we received, all the technical comments that we've gotten so far. Uh, we've reviewed them. Um, the new comments that just came through. Uh, there's really, there's no real showstoppers there. We'd be happy to, uh, you know, work with the technical staff to move forward with that. Um, I'd like to share the screen briefly, and I'd like to just discuss a couple of the, uh, changes since the last time we've been here, which are incorporating some of the comments.
Sounds good.
So, basically, all the comments. We discussed are, are, or most of the changes can be, uh, illustrated on the, on the layout plan. As you guys can see over here, uh, the layout plan's been revised. It's added a couple of dumpster containers. That way it'll handle the refuse on site. We have, uh, a, a container for metal recycling. We have a container for cardboard recycling, for general refuse. And another container for, uh. Other recycling. We have, in the course of the project, one of the comments was the request to, for. Okay, an oil-water separator, which we went through and of course, my, ooh, a little bit too far. So we've revised the plans to illustrate an oil-water separator. Uh, we've gone through, we were able to fully engineer a sanitary sewer pump station. For, and, and a boring pit and a, and the service connection to the manhole on the other side of the street. Sorry, guys. So that addresses most of the technical comments that were previously addressed. We did bring a new, uh, fire service onto the site. That was not previously, um, proposed. That's due to some architectural requirements, uh, for the building to require sprinkler, uh, a, a fire sprinkler service. I'd like to open up for, see if you guys have any comments or questions about the plans that have been submitted and if there's anything you'd like to discuss.
All right, thanks for the intro, Eric.
I'm sorry, you say Ben? I was looking at the.
Eric was looking.
Uh, that oil-water separator?
Yes, sir.
How big is it?
It's a thousand gallon.
Thousand gallon, below ground?
It is below ground.
And it's fiberglass or steel?
It's going to be a dou- a double-well steel. It's a Highland tank is what we have proposed.
Okay.
Intel is, that's storm. We have a Highland tank, um, dual-wall oil-water separator. We are proposing the one-thousand gallon size. We did some quick calculations. The only thing that's in the back there that's going to be, uh, we, we're gonna have a number of floor drains that are gonna be routed into this in the new addition.
Okay. And it's easily accessible for cleaning?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. That's it, that's all I had.
All right, thanks, Ben. Let me, Eric, do you have, uh, do you have comments from the? Department?
Eric, are you there?
I think we lost Eric somehow. Uh, Don, do you have any comments on Friendly Ford to start with?
Yeah, um, well, probably our two biggest comments. We're just, uh. Awaiting the, uh, DOT and Board of Health approval for the sanitary sewer pump station in Forest Main. I just want to make sure we got, you know, at least conceptual approval on that before the board did anything, uh, regarding the site plan. And then, secondly, there's a, um. There's a, there's a, uh, drainage manhole in the back that appeared to have a grate on it, which. Uh, we're, we're pretty sure is not supposed to be there because this is, this is a stormwater hotspot. So we just asked that that grate be removed and that only roof runoff be. Allowed to get into the infiltration chambers, um, and the DMH. So, I mean, we've got a bunch of other less significant comments, but those are the two bigger ones.
All right, thanks, Don. Eric, is, Eric, you're back?
I'm back. I did get cut off. I think I'm back.
You are.
I hear you now. You can hear me? Okay, I, I can't get video. I don't know why.
Now you have it.
Okay. Great. So, uh, this is the public hearing. Staff, uh, if, if we, staff felt that the plan is ready for a negative secret determination if the board's in agreement. But before the board takes any action on the application, um, we're right, it should first go to the ZBA. There's a number of variances. That are required, which the ZBA should rule on before the planning board considers the application after that. With regard to three issues raised by comments. The, if, if, if the northern parcel is just for, used for storage and is not an integral part of the motor vehicle sales use. Uh, and display, then, uh, the planning board can consider this parcel alone. And with regard to the thirty-foot buffers, um, that are required. The board may provide waivers for that thirty buffer. On the north, it's historically been developed. Um, and on the east as well. Uh, also in the north, there's a big rock rise, and on the east, there's a existing line of trees on the other side of the property line. So the board, staff, you know, has no concern of the board waiving that. On the Route nine, uh, side. Uh, the, the uses historically go right up to the property line. So the board should consider whether or not it wants display pads there or not, as it has required for other motor vehicle dealerships. Uh, the board was also interested in a Route nine sidewalk. Uh, we looked at some other plans where the amount of land available there. A sidewalk does appear to be feasible, uh, but the board might want to consider whether the degree of redevelopment here, which is not very large. Might warrant one of those rather than both. That is between the Route nine sidewalk and some buffering along Route nine. So that's, that, we invite the board to discuss those, um, and, and indicate its preference, um, as part of an action on this. If the sidewalk is required by the board, uh, then if this is not in our, uh. If the sidewalk is required, if the board goes that way, then it would also require, um, a maintenance agreement. And that did not make it into our comments, so I wanted to mention that.
Yep. All right, thanks, Eric. And I don't know if you heard, Don had some, some comments on it as well.
I, okay, I didn't hear it, but that's all right. I'll catch up with him.
All right. I mean, I moved that we open a public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on Friendly Ford tonight?
Again, if you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself. Uh, if you're on the Zoom, just go ahead and unmute yourself or raise your hand if you want.
Just give a minute to scroll through the.
Yeah.
The Zoom participants.
I'm not seeing anyone, uh, who's looking to.
All right, um, I move we adjourn the public hearing to May twentieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, let's, uh, go around the board for, for comments on this. And we did, and we got some late comments in from, uh, Dutch County Planning as well, just to let you know. Peter?
No, I don't have any comments.
All right, Ben? I think you, you had your comment. Anything else?
Yeah, I did, but, uh, I saw the county. Comments today that they, uh, recommended a sidewalk.
Yep. Yeah, it was generally, generally recommended for our, for our BH zone, and we've had other, other, uh. Dealerships recent, recently come in and putting sidewalks in such as Mazda and BMW. All right, uh, let's move on to Nicole.
Uh, one question that came up and. I wasn't really sure about it. Um, how do you guys get your cars delivered?
Right now, what happens is the, the, the car carriers actually come in on the, they come in from the northbound side of Route nine. And they pull into the lot and then they, uh, park basically almost in front of the building and go out on the northern entrance. It's, it's kind of an in and out.
Another question I had was. Behind the proposed addition, do you guys have any lighting proposed for that?
We saw that that was a comment, uh, from the board, uh, from the, from the, uh, town consultants, and we, uh, we will be proposing some on building lighting.
Okay, so you're gonna add some lighting to that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I know you have some variances for the ZBA. What about handicap parking?
We do have handicap parking in the front of the building. It is compliant with, um, ADA regulations where there's currently, there's two spaces. We're proposing to add, uh. I believe it's two more, um, and that is the ADA accessible entrance to the, to the building. So everybody's gonna go through that entrance, uh, to, to navigate through the building.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Rocco?
Nothing, uh, additional other than what was, um, uh, mentioned previously. Thank you.
All right, Bob?
Yeah, I just, just following up on the question about how you get the cars delivered. You say they coming from the north? Or are they coming in the northernly direction?
They're coming on the, they're coming. From the northbound lane into the southernmost driveway entrance.
So they're gonna drive past the main entrance and make a left turn into the lot?
No, uh. I'm gonna share the screen again real quickly. So what the vehicles, what the trucks do. Is we did not. Illustrate. So they're gonna come in over here on the northbound lane. They come up into here. Let me know if you guys can see my hand. The cursor. They'll come up. Across the front of the site. And then they go out. That way. Was that?
All right.
Did you guys see that?
Okay. So they're all coming. Uh, north on Route nine and then turn in at the traffic light across from, uh, where the car wash used to be.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And, and then they unload right in front of the building.
Download? Yes.
And. If, um, you put a sidewalk in, is there enough? Space in the, uh. Area between the road and the, uh, paved part of the lot? To put a sidewalk?
There's not a lot of room there. There's about nine feet. Uh, with the DOT, the DOT requires a sidewalk to be five feet, generally speaking, for ADA accessibility. Um, there's a couple of, uh, things that are in the way there. There's some hydrants, and there's also a traffic signal pole that have to be, uh. Studied and looked at and, and see if there's a way to get around those and still maintain accessibility. But, uh, it's, it's, uh. It's, it's a little bit tricky there. It. It's not as simple as just. I can't say it's possible without studying it. That, that's bad engineering.
Okay. So you take it to do that? You'll go off and study this?
We'll look at it. We will look at it. Um, however, it's, it's, we feel as though. It's, uh. It's something that, i- it's, it's energy spent that would be better spent elsewhere. As opposed to a driveway, uh, as opposed to a sidewalk across the front there. Um, you have. There, it's really not a walkable, there, area. There's not much traffic. The sidewalk's not gonna be used. Um, there's maintenance that's gonna be associated with the sidewalk. Upkeep, you're, you're taking an area, you're, you're losing an area, uh, for snow storage with the DOT. That, that's currently there. You know, you have that area, that. That nine-foot buffer space that was used there. For, that the DOT was able to use to put snow there, um, in a snowstorm. Similar to how we've had snow this year, it runs the risk actually of damaging cars if we were to, uh. Add a sidewalk there because, eh, now that really wouldn't, but, um. There's, it, it definitely would impact a location for snow storage.
Well, the, you, the snow could still be stored in the same place. Sidewalk would be usable, but.
Where are you gonna put this, where are you gonna put the snow from the sidewalk? Now, instead of having an area that you can store snow, now the, now somebody's required to remove snow from that sidewalk.
Well, would, I mean, snow's gonna fall on that piece of property right now, right?
That's correct.
So it could still fall there and stay there. And then they take the, assuming that they're taking the snow off the road and pushing it onto the. The, uh, the area in front of the building.
Well, right now, that's where, that's, there's no room to put snow there. That's, 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 uh, currently being used for cars. If you were to, when you have the sidewalk, you're required to remove the snow from the sidewalk. You can't just leave it there.
And how much, how much time do you have to do that? It's not immediate, right? You know, one of the earlier, several months ago, they were gonna have a period of time where they would be able to get snow off on a major storm. I, I don't recall what the criteria is for removal.
Usually about five to ten days, somewhere in that range.
No, 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 no. It's a matter of hours. It's not, it's not days.
The other thing that we have to look at and study is whether or not the traffic signal pole's gonna, is going to be in the way of a sidewalk.
Yep.
Because you have a very large traffic signal pole that's three-foot di- uh, that foundation is a substantial amount of size that we would have to navigate around with this sidewalk.
Like to, uh, to make some comments. This is Eric Khan. I'm the owner at Friendly Ford. You know, we really, uh, we, we really don't want, there, there's many obstacles. It's very tricky. It's, it's a tight space. And, um, you know, we've made all the other modifications, uh, that, uh, have been requested. Uh, we've been in the, the town for a long time. You know, a big part of the community, I think, a, a good fellow neighbor. We've made investments, uh, and improvements to the other properties. And, um, we've always done a great job with that, I hope you think. Uh, and, uh, you know, we're just adding a lot of cost and energy and time into, uh, something where it could be. You know, we're, we're putting a lot of investment in the rest of the property, which is really, uh, the important thing. And so I really think this is really, uh. As I said before, Rich has pointed out, there's a lot of obstacles here, and we really, uh, would prefer not to, to follow this path.
Anything else, Bob?
All right, I, I understand your position. I'm still not convinced that there isn't a, a way to do that.
Yep. Likewise, uh, we'll get to that. Anything, uh, from you, Ahmed?
No, pretty not much added. I mean, I heard. Still.
still think the sidewalk is a nice thing to have for the future as Route 9 become more, I mean, I see people taking exercises outside and running and Route 9 is not one of them because of lack of sidewalks and safety. But I'm not gonna add to it too much.
All right, thanks. I mean, my two cents is, you know, we've been getting sidewalks all along those two stretches of the stretch of Route 9 from South Gate up to up further. And it's, Mazda's putting one in, BMW put one in, they had to snake the sidewalk around fire hydrants, I recall. So I want you to at least take a look at it. You know, there could be future development just to the north of you as well as to the south, so this is, could be a critical piece. Unfortunately, I see too many people walking in the median of Route 9. So I think you should take a look at it. And my other
I run, I mean, and I try to run Route 9 sometimes and for the lack of sidewalks, it became difficult. I'm not sure how many people like me.
Yep. I understand. Is this a snow issue or the other, the other businesses deal with that as well? Other question I had was you're proposing a quite a large pylon sign that's 10 feet higher than the code. So I'd like to see that reduced in height if you can do that. I mean, you got, you already got variances to put signs on all three sides of the building. So I'm not sure why you're asking for a pylon, but at least try to meet the code more. You'll have to meet with the ZBA as well to see what they say on that. At least take a look at making that a little shorter. And
Understood. We're working on that with the ZBA.
Okay. Do you have anything to show us from architecture? That's coming, even though we're not approving architecture tonight, you might wanna do you have anything that you could show up on the screen to? Or you wanna hold off on that till May?
Yes.
Just so you get some early
I can show you guys what we have. We do have some rendering.
Yeah, good to get some early feedback in case board members have an issue.
Understood. Just give me a moment. I just was not, I did not have them up right away. They're very large renderings, so it takes a few seconds to load them.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so this is looking at the site. This comes from the over here and see the proposed new addition. Back and it's got three windows over there.
Got it.
This right here, this is the view from back of the building. You get those additional bays.
It's not popped up yet. It's still in the first image.
And then we have over here, this is the view looking from the south. This is all oh, I'm sorry.
We're still seeing the first view.
Like I said, it's a pretty large PDF, so probably take
Yeah, there it is. There's the garage bays.
Yeah.
All right. Two, eight bays there.
Okay. Yeah.
Pretty straightforward, I guess. Looks like you're using materials
This has the garage base back here. Yeah.
Anyone on, anyone on the board have any comments on that? Architecture? All right, looks like you're using the same materials. That's my comment, so I don't have any thing additional. Thanks. We're ready, ready for a motion, Nicole.
This is the view from looking north, this southernmost.
Okay, there we go. That's the view I was looking for.
Sorry about that.
It's like you fried the whole zoom.
I'm
There we go. Here it comes.
I move that the planning board as lead agency hereby determines that the Friendly Ford special use permit and site plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment. And that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated March 18, 2021.
Okay. Executive for Seeker, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this applicant subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following 1 through 11.
Second.
And add in to investigate the sidewalk.
N12 investigate sidewalk.
Okay. Second again.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
We'll see you in May. Next up is Lakeview Maxi Storage, amended site plan. They're under construction and have an amendment. Who's on here representing them?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Scott Bryant. I am the applicant and owner of Lakeview Maxi Storage located on Creek Road. I have with me tonight Rich Renia from Renia Engineering Design, who's gonna make the presentation. And I have with me Mr. Richard Cantor from T. Hannah Constantino in case there's any questions that he may need to answer.
All right.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Rich.
Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Rich Renia with Renia Engineering. I can, if you want, I can share the screen and show you, put up an exhibit to go through.
Yep, great.
Can everybody see that?
Yep, we can see it. If you could zoom in a little bit. Yep, there we go.
Yeah, I'll zoom in a little bit more. Let me know if that's
Too big.
Too big?
No, that's good.
Is that good?
Yep. Scroll a little bit up and I think we're good.
Good or better before?
Right there.
Okay, like that?
Yep.
All right, perfect. Specific, so you could see what the proposal is. So, but I'll backtrack a little bit and explain to everybody a little bit more about the site. It's located, it's Lakeview Maxi Storage. It's located at 16 Creek Road. The, it has a little bit of a history to it. Back in 2004, there was an approval for a contractor's yard. And then prior to the 2010, 2011 time period, there was a proposal for a plaza, full plaza in the site. But then back in 2013, it was approved as the storage facilities. And since that time, the first two buildings were built. So this building was built and this building here was built. And now the focus is to build buildings three and four that are in the back of the site. In exploring that, Mr. Bryant has found, in building the first two buildings, he's been able to have some learning experience and find out about the most efficient buildings to build and the sizes and the types of rents that he can get for these buildings. So he's back with a slight redesign that'll afford him two additional units on either of those buildings. And the building sizes that were originally approved were 40 feet wide by 96 feet long, so both of them were the same. Building three is now proposed to be 40 feet wide again, but 128 feet long. So that's an additional 32 feet on building three. And then building four was originally 40 by 96 and now is being proposed to be 35 feet wide and 125 feet long. So that gets an additional 24 feet. And in terms of square footage, building three is increased by 1,280 square feet and building four is increased by 306 square feet. But the way that the rental spaces break out and you can see them on the site plan, it ultimately affords four additional rental units for the site. And it boils simply down to those two orange dots that you see. So it's a very minor increase to the site plan, to the buildings. And then going through some of the planning comments, and I'm sure Erica's gonna, will go through those. But in our read of those comments, they're actually helpful to the site and helpful to the overall disturbance limit where on the previous approvals, there appeared that there was a lot more parking required and now the parking requirements are different in the fact of that we don't, we can reduce overall parking on the site by 12 spaces. So that is something considerable for this site and very much helpful. So I think that moving forward on the comments that you you will hear tonight, that we're not gonna really have any objections to that and you'll see that we're able to reduce our disturbance. So I think that the next thing to do is to, oh, that pretty much explains the project, but we should open it up to any questions or comments that you may have for us.
All right, thanks, Rich. Eric? You wanna weigh in?
Eric?
Not hearing you again, Eric.
Eric? I see him on. Let's see, he's muted for some reason. Let's see if I can, there we go.
Rich, can you stop carrying stuff?
Oh, there you are. There we go.
Are you able to hear me?
Yep, now I can hear you.
Yes. Hello?
Yeah, we hear you.
Oh, okay, all right. I don't have video, so I'll just talk. So, let's see. STAT's recommending an uncoordinated secret review on this to allow the ZBA to consider a number of variances that are proposed. The, there's or also so that the ZBA can do secrets separately from the planning board. The, most of the comments have to do with getting a clearer depiction of the proposed changes compared to what was previously proposed. That's the thrust of the comments from staff and also from the engineer. There's a minimal additional disturbance. But it's not clear exactly how much. The engineer was looking for some more information on that and we'd like to see what that was for planning review as well. The new special use permit reduces the parking requirement compared to the previous approval. So the applicant could reduce the number of spaces on the plan and that would reduce the overall disturbance. The longer 10 by 45 spaces at the back, they appear to be for some type of storage. The applicant should address that and consider if the additional disturbance is worthwhile for his purposes since he's trying to keep disturbance down below the threshold for SWIP. And the planning board should discuss those items with the applicant and and then have the applicant, we're recommending that the board defer action on the application until it has more information. But there's also a resolution to conduct an uncoordinated secret review.
All right, thanks, Eric. Don, you out there?
No, it's Rod actually on this one, Rod Morrison.
Oh, Rod?
It is, it's me. Hi. The, Eric, the plan that Rich is presenting is the new one that we saw just for the first time today. So that represents less impact than the plan that was submitted does. So it may very well be that well, they're certainly in better shape in terms of coverage, but the questions still remain that you're asking.
All right, so we're not sure if the SWIP is needed, but most likely trying to avoid it, right?
Yeah, we're just, we're not sure. They're right on the threshold, unfortunately. But the reduction that, like I said, that Rich is presenting, that he and Scott have apparently worked out over the last day or so or whenever, is less than the documents that were submitted.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a quick question? The, it looks like the document, the plan that you had up on the screen is actually the parking in the back is now reduced in length. Is that correct? Is that
Yes, yes. Mr. Bryant, upon reading the comments, has decided that he didn't need the additional parking. He was thinking that if a customer came in, sometimes they might come in with a trailer and they wanna load or unload that it would be helpful to have the longer parking space. But he's determined he didn't really need those and he didn't wanna press the additional disturbance. And when we looked at it, with the reduction of the other parking spaces, with being able to basically forfeit 12 of the parking spaces we had there. We are much less in the disturbance area now, so we're close to being, we're at about .925. So even less than when we submitted for this meeting. So that's what I was alluding to, that, you know, we're thinking that we're in really good shape when it comes to that for this project.
So you think you're in good shape to submit for an April meeting or? Or, because that deadline's coming up soon.
Yes, yeah, and I think the commission deadline is Monday. So I feel like we can make that happen.
Okay, just wanted to check on that. All right, this is on for public hearing, so I move we open the hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone on the call tonight that wishes to comment on this project? Raise your hand with the zoom or star six to unmute your phone and talk.
Not seeing anybody raised hand or anybody trying to unmute themselves.
All right, I move we adjourn the public hearing to April 15, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those
Can I just say something, please?
Who's that?
That's Scott.
Excuse me, can I just, and I don't know if this might affect anything, but I would like to respectfully request from the, from the planning board permission at my own risk to proceed with just the pouring of the slabs. I understand it would be 100% of my own risk, but I am at a time constraint with my manufacturer. There's gonna be a hefty escalation coming and if I can just get the slabs and for now I can, you know, receive delivery of these buildings and get them stored on slab. So I would ask that planning board consider that request.
Lisa, I ask the question, is there, if we had a hearing adjourned, can that still can we still accommodate this slab request?
Well, so the public hearing is adjourned and, but you're still on the, the item is still up for discussion on the agenda.
You know, we haven't voted on closing the public hearing or adjourned the public hearing.
We have not yet.
Right, we were interrupted.
Right. Didn't finish that vote, so. Do that first.
So, I mean, typically you still have the board discussion to do in general on this application, which you can do and as part of that discussion, you can consider this request. But I would finish the adjournment of the public hearing.
But I I don't know, but my question was if we adjourned the public hearing versus closing it, is that, would that play into it at all? Okay. So
No, the, the public hearing, there's not going the request depends upon the approval of the project. It has nothing to do with whether the plans are open or not and what the applicant is looking for is pre-approval permission to pour a slab, which
Carl, this is Eric, did you adjourn that to April fifteenth?
Yes.
Yep.
April fifteenth. He said they could do a supplemental fairly soon. All right, let's go around the board's comments. Peter?
I remember looking at this project eight years ago. I'm glad to see that it's successful. Keep up the good work, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Ben?
Nothing.
Nicole?
How many handicap parking spots do you have?
Originally, it was approved with one space, and I'm sorry to speak for Rich, but we have added a second space, one on each end.
So two?
Yes, one on each end.
Okay. So you're pretty much just increasing the length of building three and four, right?
Diminished the width of building four, compensated by making it lower.
Okay. And what are you putting in that maintenance shed?
Snow blowers, lawn mowers, I have a shovel, a tractor for snow, weed whacker, you know, all the maintenance, all the maintenance things.
Okay, I think that's all I had, thanks.
Thanks, Nicole. Rocco, anything?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Bob?
No, nothing from me right now.
Ahmed?
Nothing from me.
I guess my comment is on the, I know sewer, does this connect to a sewer, sewer site, and do you have any way for, you know, people storing their RVs here to empty their tanks before they store?
The answer is no on that, there's no connection to the sewer and it's not a dumping facility for people's RVs.
Okay. I was just curious on that.
Well, and I guess with those parking spaces in the back being shortened, there's actually not really parking for the RVs either.
Well, other than inside the buildings, the storage sheds.
Oh.
Let's see. I guess we're waiting on, is there any way we could do anything with the slab?
With the slab. Lisa, a question for you, this is also before the ZBA, I believe, right?
Yes, it will need to go before the ZBA.
It will need to go before the ZBA, and I think it's on, is it on the setback, April agenda?
I believe so. I'm honestly not sure, sorry.
It is, yes, it's on the April agenda.
That's the plan, right, Scott?
Thank you.
And again, just to reiterate, I would put in writing that this is at my own risk.
Right, I don't know, as I sit here, what permits might be required in order to do that, and I don't know what the, for example, what the building inspector might require from this board. I'm sure that I could work with Mr. Cantor to come up with whatever, you know, document we might need, but I think the board should discuss whether they're amenable to having the slabs go in.
I would just like to add that I do have an active building permit currently for building three. I submitted a building permit last, I think it was July, August for building four, and then that's still with the, with the building department, I think, you know, waiting for the outcome of this board's decision. So I do have one act permit, I have another one submitted since last year. I guess theoretically I could pour ninety-six feet as a bright, and I'm really just looking to pour that extra twenty-four feet, thirty-two feet on the other building.
I guess in the worst case scenario.
I have a question for the board attorney would be, are we really authorized to give that, that kind of permission? And shouldn't we be going through the building department just as a, you know, to get a green light?
Well, I think that there would need to be, as, that's why I said, as I don't, as I sit here right now, I don't know what the approvals would be required, but I think there would need to be amended building permits to show the foundation as the applicant is looking to draw, to pour it. And I don't know what Tim would say, what he would require in terms of documentation before he would issue the permit, it's a little bit difficult without him on the phone.
If, if I could suggest, I don't, I'm not, when I, when I say I'm asking for permission, don't, don't take me literally that you're granting me the ability to go pour concrete tomorrow. What I'm basically asking for is that you don't object, and then I'll work the rest of the details out with the building department, as long as they know you don't object.
Yeah, but our, our not objecting is the same as tacit approval, unfortunately. That's, I think that's, that's our issue, that's our problem.
Richard Cantor, may I, can I answer a moment?
Sure, Richard.
This is Eric, I was going to suggest, it's pretty unusual, that's usually handled administratively. I'm just going to suggest that rather than the board weighing in on something which is really atypical, the applicant's going to be back in front of you in, in about four weeks. So I'm going to suggest that maybe staff look into this and consider it as a request for that next meeting. We could talk about it with the building department, weigh the pros and cons, and, and talk with the attorney and give you a recommendation.
Good.
All right, that sounds good, Eric. I mean, it's, it's a.
Agree.
It's, it's an open project under construction, because, and this is just a modification to it, so I'd hate to see anything be held up, but, and it looks like we're not going to need a SWIP based on the discussions tonight.
Hello? Hello?
That's Richard.
Hey, Richard.
Go ahead.
Anybody hear me? It's Richard Cantor. Yeah, I, I'd like to just chime in on the slabs. I don't see any downside if the board, what you say, if they don't object to the pouring of the slabs, subject to an agreement satisfactory to the board's counsel and subject to the approval of the building department. If the building department doesn't approve it, we can't do it. If we don't work out an agreement with Lisa to say it's at our risk, if we don't get approval, we have to mitigate, remove, do whatever we have to do to, to put it back. I, I don't see any downside.
Yep. All right, thanks, Richard. I think we'll list what Eric, Eric said to do administratively and work that out.
We can work on that after, Lisa, we can, we can follow up on that tomorrow or, or Monday.
So let's go ahead with the motions, Nicole.
So, just so I'm clear before you, I don't, I hate to interrupt, so we're saying we're going to defer this to next month?
It's deferred to next month and then work, and work with the, your attorney, the board's attorney, your attorney, et cetera.
It may be that the planning board doesn't need to be involved in this at all.
Right.
And so it may be that we're able to work out the agreement that Richard just mentioned and the approval of the building department, and you won't need the approval of the planning board at all. But as we sit here tonight, it appears that the planning board's not willing to give the approval you seek or even a no comment letter at this time. So it may be that this doesn't hold you up at all, and you're able to get the permits that you seek from the building department directly, and we can take that up in the next week or so.
Yeah, it seems kind of like I'm in a, in a catch twenty-two, almost.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's just since we're not.
Now.
Since we're not.
But just to, I'm clear, certainly I could pour ninety-six feet of that slab.
Yes.
I mean, right, there can't be any objection to that.
Correct.
Well, I wouldn't, I don't want to speak for what Tim would say, oftentimes I know if there's amendments to plans, you know, you may or may not be able to.
Yeah.
Do what's approved under the prior plan, so I don't want to speak for the building department.
The technical answer is no.
I wouldn't worry about it too much, but we will ask.
Yeah, the technical answer is no, I mean, as our code is written, right, because you do have an amended site plan application and it's not yet approved, so, but is there a way for us to work with Tim and, you know, on some kind of an agreement, as, as has been discussed tonight, perhaps, and we can take that up? So let's try to do that.
Yep.
I move that the planning board determine that it will conduct an uncoordinated secret environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action.
Second.
Moved to seconded for secret, call to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven-zero.
I move the planning board determine that the application is incomplete and defer action on the application as follows. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to one through ten.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven-zero.
I move the planning board determine that the application is incomplete and defer action on the application as follows. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to one through ten.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven-zero.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
That's it for our public hearings, right?
Nope. Not yet. No, no, not yet. All right, there's a few adjournments that happened, South Hills comments, I move that we adjourn the public hearing to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Next up is Department of Corrections and Community Supervision Site Plan Hearing. I move that the public hearing be adjourned to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Next item, Locust Grove Crossing LLC. At this point, they have some issues to work out, so the, where the application is going to be removed, is there any motion we need to make?
We don't need to make a motion, we're just removing it and just noting that we will renotice the public hearing upon, when they, when they do come back, if and when they do come back.
All right. All right, Stewart Shops at South Road, I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Next up, Arlington Farms from Alabara Realty, I move that the planning board, the public hearing, I move that the planning board moved, adjourned the public hearing to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, but all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Last public hearing, Vassarinen Institute, I move that the public hearing be adjourned to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. At this time, I move we open, we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda. We ask that you limit to three minutes, and the planning board will consider the comments during this portion of the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Anyone wish to comment on any remaining items on tonight's agenda? Raise your hand on the Zoom call or star six to unmute your phone and talk. Seeing none, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Next item on the agenda is, is nine hundred Duchess Turnpike AP Packaging, a new application. And who is here to represent that AP Packaging?
This is Kelly Leibl, KRC.
Hey, Kelly.
From LRC.
And, okay.
We, we do have a PowerPoint presentation, if we are able to share the screen, we can just give you an overview of the project unless someone wanted to read something before that, I'm sorry.
No, that'll be good.
Okay. This is just a short overview of the project, because I think this is the first time the planning board has seen this. The project is, I think most of us who live in the town and have been in the town know this turnpike, which is really New York State Route forty-four. The project consists, the project area consists of a total of three buildings, so it's the predominant building that everyone sees from the road, and there's actually in the back two smaller buildings, which are not a part of this project, but I think commonly people see that there's three buildings that are on the property and on the project site. We did provide you with a copy of the existing survey. The property is approximately fifty-eight acres. It extends pretty far back behind the building that you see from Route forty-four. It's zoned in the IH industrial district, and again, the access is from Duchess Turnpike and also a road called Victory Lane, which you see here, which is the lane, the road at the signalized intersection. We did provide you with a site plan for this project. It's, you know, this is my favorite word, is de minimis, it's a very de minimis project because really what we're doing is we're simply adding twelve garage doors on the east wall of the existing building, so that would be the wall that faces Eastdale on the project site. So on this plan that I'm showing you, this is just a blow up of Victory Lane, and the project area is here on that east wall. And this is a blow up of what we're proposing, which is to facilitate the installation of twelve new garage doors or loading dock doors on that east wall to facilitate truck We provided you with a truck turning template to show how we envision the tractor trailers will come into the site and back into the new garage doors, loading docks that we're providing. So what we're proposing is to take the existing parking spaces that are in here for conventional vehicle parking and eliminate those parking spaces and take the existing curb cuts that are along Victory Lane and create one parking island essentially. We will landscape that island just to keep vehicles from pulling in and out, and this area, excuse me, this area will then be dedicated for truck turning, loading and unloading specifically for that purpose only.
All right.
We did provide you with some information regarding the parking on site, because we are eliminating a number of parking spaces as evident on the plan that we provided you and the summary that was provided by the town planning department, there's more of this that we're proposing. The applicant that we're representing this evening is a company called AP Packaging, and they have an existing manufacturing facility located in Lyndon, New Jersey. And this project is very attractive to the state and to Duchess County and of course to the town of Poughkeepsie, because they are relocating their entire manufacturing facility from Lyndon, New Jersey to Poughkeepsie, New York. Many of you probably say why, and one of the reasons is this is a very rapidly growing business. The company produces bubble wrap for shipping, and as I'm sure, as everyone has a FedEx delivery truck come to their house, you know, on a daily basis, packaging is becoming very popular. They've moved four times in the last seven years because they've outgrown the facilities that they've been located in. They are currently under contract to purchase this property and again, are moving their entire facility, their entire manufacturing, some of the vacant space that is located inside of this building, with the hopes that as tenants leave this space, that they can take over those additional areas. They are making a significant investment into this building. into this building and into the relocation.
You're fading out a little, Kelly.
Sorry?
Yeah, you're fading out a little bit.
I can hear you. I'm sorry.
We didn't hear that last sentence, if you could repeat.
Okay, I'm sorry. They're making a significant investment into the property and into the relocation from New Jersey into New York State. And so we're very excited, you know, being a town of Poughkeepsie resident myself, very excited that we have a manufacturing facility moving in, you know, to our county and to our town. With that, they are going to be creating between 69 and 100 jobs the first year with, we're here tonight again just to review the site plan for the project and the introduction of the 12 new garage doors. I mean, it's a very limited site plan improvements on the property, but of course needs to come before this board. The applicant is just reminding me that I need to make sure that I let you know that there's no, you know, new water demand. We'll provide the town into there with the water information for the water demand and no significant water demand for the project. The facility is, uses very, very little water and predominantly goes to that water is recycled. So that's, that really summarizes the project. We did receive the comments from the town regarding engineering and fire and water and so forth, and we reviewed those. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thanks, Kelly. Eric, can you weigh in?
Yes, I'm, I'm here.
All right.
We'd agree it's a relatively minor application. It does meet criteria for a type two action according to SIKR. We received a preliminary plan to get on the agenda in case it did need to be circulated. So we are seeking some additional information, in particular to clarify existing versus proposed conditions. There is a little bit of work proposed, footings for the, footings proposed for the new loading docks. And there's also questions to how the space between the truck circulation area and Victory Lane will be handled. Presently, it's just some rocks in a ditch. And there's some proposals to adjust that for drainage or other purposes. In particular, we're recommending that the board discuss with the applicant whether or not there should be some pedestrian access provided between the building and the Eastdale Village connector. There's an existing walkway in front of the building now. We were suggesting that the board might want to consider a connection there so to enable workers to get to that, that walk of the site. And also treatment of trees or landscaping for that connection and also possibly for whatever comes out of the separator island that ends up between, yet to be confirmed, between the truck area and Victory Lane. That's our comments.
Thanks, Eric. Don, anything from, it's mostly developed, I know.
Yes, we asked for a few additional plans. I know one of the comments that we had that board was wanting to discuss with the applicant is, you know, whether there are any odors that would be emanating from this type of facility. We also mentioned needing, you know, the floodplain administrator to be signed off. That might not be necessary if the floodplain, you know, is shown on the plans. And we weren't sure about the speedies permit and who owns the sewage treatment plant at the moment. So weren't sure whether that needed to be transferred, transferring ownership or not, though those were the main things.
All right, thanks, Don. I mean, that was a question we had as well. Kelly, do you have any information on what kind of odors this manufacturing?
Yeah, we can certainly provide that from the client, but it's our understanding when we've asked those questions before, there's no odors. It's a very, very clean manufacturing process. And I would say it's more of an assembly versus a manufacturing. And there's no new air permitting, very, very minimal activity inside of the site. We will get answers for you, though, from the applicant. So you have that information directly. We did provide the town with a summary of the manufacturing process itself as part of the application, mostly addressing water and sanitary disposal, but we'll provide the information on the odors as well.
All right, thanks, Kelly.
Anything about the carbon footprint?
I'm not quite certain how to address that, but we can, you know, ask the client about what their carbon footprint is. It is a manufacturing facility, so I would imagine, you know, there is going to be some impact.
All right, it's great to see a space reused, I would say, and welcome new business to town. Let's go around the board for, for comments, though. We'll start with Ahmed. You sound like you were chiming in there.
Yeah, I just asked my question.
Okay, anything else?
Since we have a facility here, if we can get more information about how much is going to add to our town of carbon footprint.
Okay. Bob?
You made a comment during your introduction about the number of times they've moved the company prior to the one from New Jersey to here. And just, is there any reason to believe they're going to stay in this facility for a while, or could they outgrow this and be looking to move someplace else in a few years?
It's, it's a good question. The other properties that they've been located in were rentals and not ownership. So they are purchasing this property. They are paying significantly more for the property than the current assessed value. So it is a significant investment. They recently ordered a $1 million piece of equipment that's being customized for this building. It takes several months to manufacture and get it into the space. So I do believe that they're making a significant investment into the property. We are working aggressively with the New York State Excelsior Program. So they are, the state is actively working with the applicant as well and, you know, trying to court and attract them to New York. And I believe that once that, you know, agreement is solidified, that they really have a permanent investment into, into New York.
Okay, thank, that's, I mean, that's, that's good to hear. And I'm sure there's not going to be any shortage in the demand for bubble wrap. And if they want some used bubble wrap, I'd be glad to donate a whole pile of it.
Okay. We'll find out if they recycle. That's a good question to see if they do take it.
That is a good question, recycling. All right, Rocco?
Okay, a couple of things, Kelly. One is the mention about the interaction with the Eastdale and the ability to get over there because if I'm not mistaken, there's going to be a public area at the back part of Eastdale there. So that might be an area where people might want to go during lunch. It shouldn't be too far. There's, there's going to be some walkways and some other amenities there. So that's one thing to follow up on. The other thing is that, to follow up on what Bob just said, you said that this site is going to be 58 acres. You would assume, I would think that if they needed to expand, there might be room to expand?
Yes. Yep, correct.
There's also, as Kelly stated, there's existing tenants to that. Over time, as they move out, the existing tenants, the idea would be to take over those spaces to allow them to grow within the footprint that they already have.
Okay. And the third thing was with the, with the 12 loading bays there, what, what do you anticipate that the traffic would be with those trucks? Because I know, I know Eastdale's got a side road coming out onto Victory Lane as well. So what would be the interaction of the trucks, which are much bigger than most vehicles are, et cetera?
So that would... That's a very good question, and we'll get that information. I know he had provided it to us before, but I think we should get peaks so we know really essentially when they envision vehicles coming in and out. So we'll get that. That's a good question, and we'll get that for you.
Yeah, we weren't, I was, I was curious to how many, how many trucks per day kind of thing, or is it?
And then, and then along with that, I know it's just, I don't even know if this, if this question makes sense, but there's a light there, if I'm not mistaken. And, and usually to maneuver a larger truck takes a lot longer than a vehicle. So there's, there have to be perhaps any changes there to allow at least more than one vehicle or one truck through at a time? Because I don't know what the timing are on those lights. I assume that's part of the, yeah, that'll be part of the study. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yep. A lot of those lights were, the timing was all rechanged a bit with the Eastdale, so it'd be good to look at that and coordinate. All right, Nicole?
Do you know if there'll be paving and striping this?
We do not envision that there's going to be any paving, but there will be striping because we are going to eliminate all of those vehicle, you know, passenger vehicle parking spaces in that one area. So we will be sealing that area and eliminating those parking spaces and then restriping them to shuck directional traffic for the tractor trailers. And some little paving where we're removing a small grass area to put those loading docks in.
Okay, thank you.
Ben, anything?
Yeah, Don mentioned the odors in this manufacturing plant. And I know you're going to look into that, but I, I don't know much about bubble wrap or extruding plastic. Is there a lot of waste or is it minimal and will it be contained? Because you know how sensitive people are and with the environment with plastic flying around, is any chance of that?
They have advised us and, and we did submit that summary report for the planning board and I, they've described it as more of an assembly than a manufacturing. There's no chemicals. There is no waste product. 99% of their product is recycled. And so they have very, very little waste. Their water demand is essentially bathrooms for staff. Any water that they use is recycled and very little minimal demand. It's really HVAC units. So, you know, again, I describe it more as an assembly versus a manufacturing where there's chemicals. They've assured us there are zero chemicals, and that was in this letter that I asked them to provide, the planning board. But we'll, we'll address again. They have asked us if there's odors. They have indicated there are no odors. There's no air permitting. There's nothing required for that process.
Okay, thank you.
And that brings to mind trash. It didn't say any additional trash proposed about over what's there now.
No additional trash or trash receptacles. So something happened to my presentation and there was like four or five slides that got eliminated, but I had slides showing the existing trash receptacle area that is there now. And there's two dumpster containers there, and they're proposing to continue to use those same dumpsters with no new, no new trash receptacles required.
All right. Peter?
I was originally concerned when I heard this is going to be a manufacturing process because the, the treatment plant there is 50 years old. And it flows into the Waventures Creek, which frequently dries up in the summer. But I see under the, the project summary that there won't be any additional water or hazardous materials. And there will be no generation of hazardous or liquid waste for disposal.
Correct.
So that's good news. Could you share with the town engineer a copy of that section of your IDA application, the summary of the manufacturing process, so we can fill in the blanks?
Yes, it was actually part of the package that was submitted to the planning department. So, and, but I can re, I can also get it to the engineer, so he has it.
Good.
As I should have just pointed out, that we, we actually did this very useful process on this project that the town is now offering, which is called a pre-application meeting. And it's the first that I've done. It was phenomenal. We got every department head together on a Zoom meeting for this project. So we have already met and discussed with water, sanitary, engineering, planning zoning, and we have discussed the wastewater treatment plant with Franco at length. It's Franco's desire that, 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 you know, sewage treatment plant be eliminated and the applicant connect to the town sewer. It's not a requirement, but that's his, his personal request. We have advanced discussions with Eastdale, you know, to try to make that happen. It certainly will not be accomplished in the timeframe that we're looking to try to secure the approvals for this project. And we've represented that to Franco and the planning department. So we're well in the, in the, advanced in having discussions with, again, with the town and with the adjoining property owner to try to make that happen. But for the time being, that sewage treatment plant, the ownership will be transferred as part of this property fee simple. So our, our applicant will be the new owners of that.
Okay, so in other words, have you provided the, the engineering department with a copy of the summary of the manufacturing process?
We did. It was part of the application package that we delivered to the planning board. So they do have it. Andy Lern most likely has a copy of it. I'm not sure if it got to Don, but yes, they do have it.
Thank you.
Peter, just for the board's help, because a couple members asked about it. There's a one-page summary on the manufacturing process in your spiral bound packet that you received right after that first yellow divider before the EAF. And then there's a couple of pages just about the, the manufacturing use that this applicant is proposing in the building.
Thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, thanks, Peter. My two cents, I'd like to see a, there's a whole intersection issue there, Kelly. Eastdale's bringing that road in from the, from the east, and they have a sidewalk along the north side of that. And you've got a sidewalk coming across the front of this building all the way to the loading dock area. So if you can get some little connector and a crosswalk marking to the Eastdale sidewalk, I imagine there's a lot of, a lot of places that employees could make use of for lunchtime and whatever and shopping over in that.
We acknowledge that, and I think we're going to do a meeting with Eric tomorrow on Zoom just to talk about the pedestrian crossings. And hopefully we can come to an agreement of the appropriate location.
Sounds good. Looks like a fairly easy connection there. The more difficult issue is I don't know who's responsible for the, the whole intersection there. There's potholes that could swallow a car and it's, and it's got some rough, rough, I don't know who's responsible for that portion. It's, I guess it's on this lot, the majority of it.
I believe it is. We, we're, we believe that that's the case, that the road is the responsibility of the current owner and then the new owner.
Okay, because they, it's coming in and the shoulders are dropping off with, into dirt. It's been eroded. So there's no, nothing other than, no shoulders there. It's not a good situation for the trucks coming in and out, I don't think. And something else you might want to take a look at is perhaps moving or removing that first speed hump coming in to the site. May not be a great thing for all those trucks as well as, you know, if they're just going to circulate there. It's a fairly big speed hump right there, just before we get to the trucking docks.
Right. You're talking right at the stop sign.
I think it's even past, I have to go back and look. It's after, after the stop sign. It's in between the stop sign and the, and the trucking bays is the big speed hump.
Okay, okay.
And there's some additional ones as you go further back on the site, but this one, all, this one, all the trucks will wind up hitting us just as they're turning into the loading area.
Okay.
So it may be possible to, to remove or move that. Let's see if I had anything. And the other thing, I guess you're providing that bioswale type of island there.
Correct. What we're doing is we're removing that asphalt there, and we're going to create one large curb that's going to be landscaped.
Okay, now that's what my next question was. Can you continue that line of, of trees that's going further back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We acknowledge the requests. It's keeping in there. That would be, it currently takes stormwater from that area and will remain in that same direction.
I had trouble hearing you, Ken, but...
Sorry. The, the stormwater from that area would continue in the same direction it is to that basin that are there, those low spots. So we'll just maintain that same drainage pattern.
All right, sounds good. And there's a new stormwater basin for Eastdale there as well, but that's different. All right, it sounds like you've got things under control. There's no, there're not going to be any outdoor storage of, of things, of materials or anything, right?
Correct.
All right, I think that covers all my comments then. And ready for motion. All right, I think that covers all my comments then, and ready for motion.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed project is a type-two action pursuant to 617.5C9.
Second. Second.
Moved and seconded for a type-two action. Called the question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to, the following one through nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called the question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, good to see something reused.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask one question. If this application is required to go to county planning for a referral, we were simply asking that if the board could authorize that referral over to the board so that we could utilize the next 30 days to get their comments back and, you know, perhaps take some action at the next meeting.
Kelly, this is Eric. We'll forward, it was circulated to the county. I'm not aware of having received their response yet, but whenever we get it, we'll forward it to you.
Okay, actually, okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did get one that indicated it was a matter of local concern.
Well, that was easy. Well, thank you, everyone. What a wonderful night we've had. Okay.
The town.
Great job. Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
All right, take care, Kelly. We'll see you next time.
Take care.
Take care, Ken. All right, we got a couple of time extensions here. Greystone Day have, I moved at the planning board, grant a 12-month time extension of conditional site plan approval from April 15, 2021, forward to April 15, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Another one, Core Adventure Office, time extension. I moved at the planning board, grant two 90-day time, 90-day time extensions, moving the conditioned approval expiration date from April 30, 2021, to October 27, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
We had two additional items quickly that we needed to talk about related to the tree felling. Eric, do you want to quickly, you know, very quickly, just talk about those two?
Sure. Let's see. First of all, the ticklebin architecture at the Springside location, it's sometimes called the Porkchop Project on Springside Avenue. The proposed five-story view approved the additional unit in a four- to five-story building residential with commercial on the first floor. They would like to, they would like to cut the few trees. I think it's only four or five trees that are there. They have submitted plans to address conditions of approval, but they don't yet have signature. And they would like permission to cut those trees prior to the March 31st, beginning of the season, when you can't cut trees because of the potential presence of bats.
Yeah, it's coming up.
And we said that we would provide that to the planning board for, for your potential endorsement. And we have no issues with it. They would just drop the trees. There would not be any ground disturbance unless and until they get site plan approval to proceed with the plan. They, I think that's pretty much it on that one.
All right.
I had a plan up for you to look at.
Yeah.
Let me see if I can bring that up, if you want to see it.
Just a quick, that'll be helpful to board members.
All right, and let's see. Is that coming up?
It's starting. There we go. All right, so just a couple of little clusters of-
All right, so this is, I think it's a total of 14 or 15 trees. They're not even all that clustered. I guess one of them might be considered a cluster on this site. And so we said that we'd provide that to you for your discussion and endorsement, if you're inclined.
Yep, and they're keeping all the trees in the way, away along the highway.
Correct.
I have no objections. Any, any other-
Eric, are any of these, are any of these mature trees, you know?
I, they are all, let's see. I assume that they're mature enough to qualify as bat trees because usually the smaller trees don't have the crevices and the barks that would potentially provide a hiding place for bats. So my assumption is that they're large enough to qualify for that season restriction.
Was the removal of the trees part of his site plan application?
Yes, yes, that's where the building's going.
Yes.
So he just wants to push the timetable of-
Correct. As if they're not allowed. There's a note on their plan as a result of CICA review that says that they can only cut trees between October, I think it's 31st, or I had March 31st.
All right.
As the bats come out of hibernation, then they start roosting in the trees, and then you can't cut them unless you do acoustic, I've heard of people doing acoustic studies and other things, which is very difficult and expensive. So usually people try and get their site plans signed and done before March 31st.
Okay, so the removal was part of their plan?
Yes.
Anyway, okay.
Yeah, I'm just doing a quick street view, and some of them look mature. There's a couple smaller ones. But it's where the parking lot and building go. And as I said, you're keeping the ones along the highway.
The building, if, you, you can see there's a diagonal line here of an overhead wire. That's the old alignment of Springside Avenue, and their proposed building is going right in the vicinity of that angle.
And Eric, all the trees that they, they plan to remove have been identified.
Correct.
So that no more than 14, or whatever the number is, will be removed.
Um, that's, this, this is the existing survey of the site. That's all that they're showing. So yes, they're proposing to remove only those trees.
Yeah, there's a lot of open space on this site.
Apparently, they're the only trees that would be removed.
Right, there's a lot of open space on the site, too, so it's not very wooded.
I'm just thinking out loud, but will somebody follow up to be certain that only those trees were removed?
Yeah. We, we could have engineering inspect. Mike agree with that?
Yeah, it's fine. There's only 14 trees there, so I don't think there's, there's really nothing, you know. This is, they're where the building and the parking is going to go, and they just need to get them down before March 31st, and they're the only trees there.
Anybody else on the board have comments or objections? Okay. I move that we allow Springside to cut those trees before March 31st.
Second.
And I just amend that to be, that somebody from the town will follow up to be certain that only those trees were removed.
As amended, yep. And second again?
Second.
And seconded by Ahmed. Called the question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben? Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
The second one is Mazda on Route 9. Maybe I'll just quickly, it's a similar circumstance. Obviously, they need to, there are some trees on the site adjacent to where the existing Mazda is, which is the old trailer park. They, it, it's a little different, though, in that they haven't yet submitted their final plan for signature, although we have confirmed and know that they are working on the last few pieces of those conditions. So we expect that to be very soon. It's also different in that they're not individual trees, but there are some clusters on that site. There's some three areas that are kind of, you know, wooded. None of it's, is old growth wood, but it's, you know, they're wooded now. We felt this was, because it's a little bit larger area, that we wanted to make sure to have security in place. So we had a bond, a cost, excuse me, of restoration that was prepared by our engineers. And we asked for security for that. The town board last night approved the security agreement for that purpose. So as long as we're okay with that, they too would be felling the trees. There's a period of time for them to get through their site plan, and then they, you know, if, if they have to go ahead and they can either restore the site, you know, seed it, or the town would have the ability to do that by taking the money that they deposited, which is $49,000, I think, yeah, so.
All right, yeah, more trees in this area. I'm just looking at the street view myself. I'm surprised. I remember this whole thing just, once they moved the trailers out, it was, the mobile homes out, it was clear.
Yeah.
Just a clear, open field. Nature has come back, but as Mike has said, it's not, because of that, it's not old growth. It's maybe, what's it, 15 years, maybe 10?
Yeah.
Since they left, so. Anybody on the board have comments on this?
I'm sharing the screen.
Yeah, I see it on, you're sharing the screen. You can see the old roads from the mobile home park intertwined through there.
We're excited to see this project moving forward. As you know, it's been, you know, they've gone through quite a process. So we're certainly eager to help them, you know, if they can get going this year, that's, that would be wonderful.
Yep.
Just so the board knows, both Planning Board Council and Town Board Council reviewed the agreement and are satisfied with it. And it either has been or will be signed prior to the undertaking and the amount, the check will be in the town coffers. So we are confident that we have the ability to redress any issues that should arise.
All right.
We're not anticipating any, but we have the ability.
A good fence makes a good neighbor.
Yep, thanks, Lisa. Any board members have any comments on this or objections? I move that we allow Mazda to cut their trees before March 31st with this, with the stipulation of the, was it escrow or bond?
It's an undertaking.
The undertaking.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called the question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ahmed?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Does anyone else have any other business before the board tonight?
Eric, you can unshare your screen, then we can all see each other.
Here we go. Okay, seeing none. Going once, going twice.
I move we terminate this meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Terminate the meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
It's looking like a good weekend. Have a good weekend.
You, too.
You, too.